All right, everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I want to start off, I was, today is Teacher Appreciation Day. And as we gather here, I want to begin by acknowledging the profound impact that our teachers have on our community. Teacher Appreciation Day is not just a date on the calendar. It's a heartfelt recognition of the tireless efforts, unwavering commitment, and profound influence our educators have on shaping our kids' future. Each day, our teachers step into the classroom ready to inspire, challenge, and nurture the minds of our students. They do much more than teach. They build the environment where creativity, curiosity, and learning flourish. Our teachers are the architects of our future, guiding young minds to grow and explore. Today, on Teacher Appreciation Day, we express our gratitude, not with words, but through our continued support and commitment, and providing them with the resources, respect, and recognition they so richly deserve. Let's take this opportunity to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you to all teachers. And on that, now we're going to go out to the 25 years of service recognition for our teachers that are here tonight.
And so, just with that, kind of following that conversation, every time I have an opportunity to kind of meet and connect with some of our teachers and some other members of our Somers family, I want to say thank you as an educator, and I also want to say thank you as a parent. Many of you have had my children in the past and things, and so, actually get to go to my youngest daughter's graduation from college here in a couple of days. So, thanks for the good work. It wasn't for me, she got it, that's for sure. So, thank you to all the teachers that have supported all my kids all along the way. So, we'll go ahead and start. So, we have eight members of the Somers family here today to recognize that 25 years of dedicated service they provided to the community, to our children, to our families, and honestly, to each other. This is a hard role. It's nothing that we can just kind of do on our own accord. So, again, thinking about the collective energy, I want to say thank you to everybody for being here tonight, and you brought some of your own family members here. So, tonight, I'll ask our administrators to come up, say a few words, and then we will pause and take a break for a moment so the board can just say thank you in person, and then we'll kind of continue on with the rest of the meeting. So, the first up, I'll go ahead and ask Mrs. Winter here from Primrose. So, she'll go ahead and recognize anybody from her building with 25 years of service. So, thanks, Katie.
Come up and join me, Mr. Tetro. You can wave to the camera. All right, we're going to start with the math problem here. 25 years of service, plus a genuine love for math, plus the ability to reach children on a personal level. I have with me Eric Tetro. In his 25 years of service to the students of Somers, Eric has taught at Somers Middle School, the Intermediate School, and at Primrose. As an elementary classroom teacher, Eric has reached countless students across all subjects. As a sixth-grade math teacher, he welcomed students from SIS and helped them find themselves in mathematics. As an advanced learning teacher, Eric helped students find their passion, pushing past state standards into research and inquiry. Back at Primrose as an AIS and Math Enrichment teacher, Eric has hit his stride, unlocking the world of math daily for our youngest learners. But Eric's joy and enthusiasm cannot be contained within the four walls of Primrose. After school, he turns his basic ten frame in for the frames and alleys of the Somers High School bowling team. With his math sense, he has served as an SFA Building Representative and as its treasurer. But in the parking lot of Primrose, he works with our staff to ensure the safe arrival of students via bus and car. At dismissal, his colleagues are impressed with his dance moves when the music is cranking. So, we have 25 years divided by three buildings, may not work out evenly, but we are thrilled that the remainder of your career will be bringing mathematical joy to the children of Primrose. Thank you, Eric.
So, no dance moves?
I think I've seen a couple of those along the time. Thank you very much, sir, very much. All right, so next we have SIS is here to go ahead. I believe we have two members of the SIS family to go ahead, so we're going to go ahead and start.
Shannon, would you like to come up, please?
Thanks. Dean, if it's okay, if you can just put them to your left. Thanks, Linda. Thanks, Shannon.
Today, we're here to celebrate an extraordinary milestone in the career of one of our beloved teachers. For 25 years, Shannon Frye has dedicated herself to the noble profession of education, leaving an indelible mark on countless young minds within our district. Shannon has taught in all four of our buildings, either as a classroom teacher or more recently as a reading interventionist. She started her career here at Somers as a kindergarten teacher, and then SIS was fortunate to have her teach third grade for many years. During this time, Shannon influenced the lives of many students and pioneered STEM projects in her classroom. She was also the founder of the Thanksgiving Day Balloon Parade that all the third graders now participate in. She contributed so much to our building over the years, but what truly sets her apart is her unwavering passion for teaching children to read. She has poured her heart and soul into nurturing the next generation of readers. Shannon has empowered her students to become lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and compassionate individuals who understand the power of words to change the world. She understands that learning to read is not just about mastering phonics and comprehension, it's about fostering a passion for literature, curiosity, and discovery. Shannon, on behalf of the district, we want to express our deepest gratitude for your tireless dedication to our students. You have made the difference in the lives of so many, and for that, we are eternally grateful. Here's to 25 years of excellence and to many more to come. Congratulations, Shannon, and thank you for everything.
And now, Kalen, would you like to come up? So, we would like to congratulate and thank Kalen Jacobellis for her dedicated 25 years of service for making a difference in the lives of our Somers students. Get over here. Mrs. Jacobellis has been a teacher in the third grade for her entire tenure in Somers. During that time, she has been a grade-level coordinator. She's been on every committee imaginable, language arts, science, social studies, everything we've had. And she embodies the qualities of kindness, compassion, creativity, and advocacy that have made her a true leader among her colleagues and a mentor to countless students. Mrs. Jacobellis's classroom has always been a place of warmth and encouragement. Her kindness shines through in the way she greets each student with a smile and takes the time to listen to each and every one of them. Mrs. Jacobellis creates a safe space where every child feels valued and respected, a true gift that leaves a lasting impact. Her tireless efforts to connect with and meet the needs of each child, whether it's providing extra help, advocating for resources, or simply being entrusted confident is evident every day. When speaking with her class recently, they told me that she is amazing, hardworking, experienced, fun and funny, and they made sure I understood the difference between the two. That the class is fun, but you're funny. Intelligent, great, and just the best. They also told me they enjoy all the STEM activities that you do, and they also mentioned that you are the very best at helping them pick out books to read, and that no one has the touch you do. I got a whole speech on that from them. From the interactive projects and the engaging experiments, Kalen's students are always happy, engaged, and moving forward. As a leader among her colleagues, Kalen generously shares and supports others with her expertise and insights. Always striving to improve her teaching practice and foster that collaborative environment, Kalen is known to research, look things up, find great things, and want to do them yesterday. She lets all her colleagues know that through texts and emails, whether it is early in the morning, late at night, the weekends, vacation, summer, Christmas break, they'll get the text that we need to do this tomorrow. She is also quite the storyteller, whether in her class through her classrooms or with her colleagues, and it'll always start with, "Oh, you have to listen to this." The story will go on, and everyone, whether a student or a child, will leave smiling and laughing. Mrs. Jacobellis, on behalf of your students, colleagues, and the entire school community, we want to express our deepest gratitude for your unwavering dedication and commitment to the past 25 years at SIS. We knew we had something good we didn't let go over. You have touched countless lives and left an indelible mark on our school. Congratulations to 25 years.
All right, so we're going to go ahead to the middle school. Mrs. Mangone is going to go up and introduce people there, as Paul makes some quick adjustments here. So, thank you, Paul.
Make sure you're in the frame, it's very important. So, it gives me great pressure, pleasure, and pride and admiration that I stand before you today to celebrate the remarkable achievements of my colleague, Chris Velez. For 25 years, Chris's dedication to education at SMS has known no bounds. She has taught eighth-grade science and earth science, leveraging her expertise to instill a love for learning in each of the students that she encounters. Throughout her tenure, she has held roles such as curriculum leader and team leader, demonstrating her commitment to the continuous improvement of our educational programs. In Chris's classroom, she's dedicated to fully engaging students in the learning process, employing innovative teaching strategies that capture the imaginations and ignite the curiosity of our learners. Whether it's organizing eclipse activities to happen in all eighth-grade classrooms, or connecting Down Syndrome awareness day to science and encouraging students to wear crazy socks to represent the differences and uniqueness among us. Chris goes above and beyond to create memorable and meaningful learning experiences. But perhaps what truly sets Chris apart is her unwavering commitment to the well-being of her students. No one really cares what I have to say about Chris, but what you do care about is what her kids have to say. So, I asked a bunch of eighth graders, who are the perfect audience for teacher feedback, and here are the things that I got about Chris. Brace yourself. She's energetic, she's a strong, independent, and sassy woman. She's super organized. Make sure you capitalize "super," Mrs. Mangone, and let them know that she is super organized and knowledgeable. She is really understanding. She makes sure that everyone is comfortable in her classroom and feels safe. She cares about everyone, not just as students, but as people. And I close with this one, she's lit. So, Chris is not just a teacher, she's a force of nature. She's a beacon of inspiration, both to her students and to her colleagues, and she's a true asset to our school community. As we celebrate her 25 years of dedicated service, let us express our deepest gratitude for her unwavering commitment to all of the students at SMS and to our building culture. Chris, I don't know what I'll ever do without you, so you're not allowed to retire, because this well-deserved milestone is a really important one, and we are so blessed to have you as a part of our school community. Then you get a treat. So, I'm also going to be celebrating Monica Menko, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. So, it gives me great pressure, pleasure, to celebrate Monica and share a little bit about her 25 years and her incredible excellence here at SMS. Monica's impact extends far beyond the classroom. To know Monica is to know that she's always on the move. I don't know if Monica knows how to stand still during the school day, and that's because she is committed to every aspect of our school culture. When I asked Monica's seventh graders what they had to say about her, they said, "She engages us actively in all of our lessons and makes sure that we learn by doing, not just by reading or seeing. She makes science not only understandable but fun, and she relates it to kids our age. She connects with us, and she's so kind." One kid said, "She just gets middle-school kids. She understands that we're different and that we need a special kind of teacher. She makes funny jokes, and she makes learning science fun. I love when she wears her lab coat." I do too, by the way. These things set Monica apart as a truly exceptional educator. She really just gets middle-schoolers, and she understands middle-school education. And she thinks deeply about how to engage, motivate, and support her students in their learning. In addition to her role as teacher, Monica wears many, many hats in SMS. She serves as a team leader, she's our NGHS advisor, she's the seventh-grade field trip coordinator. She's also on our hospitality committee, making sure that both her colleagues and students feel loved, cared for, and supported each day. She's very dedicated to enhancing the student experience as middle-schoolers, both inside and outside of the classroom. Monica is much more than just a seventh-grade science teacher. She's a passionate educator who cares deeply about the whole child. As we celebrate Monica's 25 years of dedicated service, I want to share my deep gratitude for the amazing commitment that she has, not only to our SMS students, but to our building as a whole. Congratulations, Monica, on this well-deserved milestone. She said she was going to watch, so I will wave.
And we have Mr. Beer coming up for the high school, so thanks, Mr. Beer.
All right, so the first person I'd like to call up tonight is Ms. Laura Vegliante. You've had a motto now, so you know where to stand. Laura Vegliante started in Somers in 1999, first working as a substitute and leave replacement math teacher, before moving into her current position as a full-time math teacher, and then later on doubled up as a special ed teacher. And that all started in 2002. Since that time, Laura has been an amazing asset to our math department, teaching a variety of both general education and special-class math courses to students with a wide range of abilities. In each case, Laura has effectively broken down even the most challenging of math concepts so that all students can find success. When you walk into Laura's classroom, you will hear her addressing her students as "sweetie" and "hon." Those terms of endearment are evidence of the warm and supportive atmosphere that has characterized her classroom for over two decades. Sorry, lost my spot. In the letter recommending Laura for tenure, then-principal Linda Horus writes, "It is part of Laura Vegliante's nature to be both patient and reassuring. She has accepted and nurtured students of all levels of ability and social growth. She has created a classroom climate that is intellectually and emotionally safe and secure. That was true back in 2005, and it is still true to this day. Laura cares about her students, is invested in helping them be successful, and she patiently and doggedly supports them through any challenges that they face. In Laura's file, I found a sheet that went along with her introduction to her students, letting them know what they can expect in her class. On that sheet listed 10 rules. Her classroom rules stated, one, be polite. Two, cooperate in groups. Three, respect everyone in the class, including yourself. Four, be confident. Five, work hard. Six, my favorite, always have a pencil. Seven, my second favorite, be nice to Mrs. V. Eight, be nice to each other. Nine, still true today, no chewing gum. And finally, 10, only kind words in this class. These rules show clearly that above all else, hard work, preparedness, kindness, and respect have been hallmarks of Mrs. Vegliante's classroom, and over the 25 years, countless students in Somers High School have been lucky enough to have her as their teacher and have benefited from being part of this warm, nurturing environment. Laura, thank you for caring for your students as much as you do. Thank you for reminding them that a sharpened pencil and a willingness to work hard are often all that it takes to find success. And thank you for showing your students that at the end of the day, kindness and caring matter more than grades on a math test. Congratulations on your 25 years at Somers High School. And next up, I have Melissa Perch. This one's going to pull from a couple of sources, and I'm going to do my best to... All right, I can actually read that. Perch. Picture this, Sicily, 1922. Oh, no, sorry. Those of you who watch Golden Girls will get that reference. It's the fall of 2020. Our school has just resumed after being dismissed from school for four months, and we started this new thing called the Hybrid Model of Education. I'm walking down the hallway in upper B wing, and all of a sudden, I hear loud, booming music playing, only to find out that it is Ms. Perch's room, as she is getting her students ready in class and on Zoom with a dance party at 7:35 a.m. While other teachers were struggling to figure out how to engage students in this new normal of hybrid education, Ms. Perch put her all into creating an atmosphere in which her students master unmasked, in class or at home, on Zoom, that they felt connected. That philosophy has fueled Melissa's teaching for the past 25 years and is evidenced by just speaking to any of her current and former students. They might call her crazy or a little nutty, but when you talk to them, they will all tell you that she makes class fun, that she knows them beyond just being in the classroom, and that beneath the crazy, zany, fun teacher, that she cares deeply about them. That is what Melissa has fostered in her classroom over the past two decades. She gets to know her students well and demonstrates a genuine interest in them so that every student who walks into her classroom knows that they matter. Her connections with her students are deep, and they are what makes Mrs. Perch one of the most respected teachers in our building. Recently, Melissa put her practice of being an English teacher to use and published a book called Beyond the Bell: 12 Lessons for Students Beyond High School. And I just took a quick section from this, which says in her own writings, "This book is for you, and selfishly, this book is for me. The high school version of myself that didn't know I'd be brave enough to someday share these stories so real and so raw. I did not know then that you, my students, would be some of the most important people in my life who would teach me just as much as I have taught you, perhaps even more." And that has been Melissa Perch. She has been the guide on the side, she has learned not only with, but also from her students, and she has humbled herself to let them be her teacher. So, Melissa, congratulations on 25 years of inspiring young minds for teaching our students how to appreciate literature and to improve their writing, but most of all, to being the most caring adult in some of their lives. Thank you and congratulations.
And then, we have to kind of round us out this evening. Chris McCordney is going to come up and do one of our members from the SS campus. Good to see you, James.
Sorry, needed glasses. Thank you, Dr. Blanch. I'm honored to be here tonight to congratulate James Simmons on 25 years of service to the students and staff of the Somers Central School District. I would like to add that it took quite a bit of convincing to get Jimmy here tonight. He felt bad leaving the building short, but it's well deserved, and I'm happy you decided to join us. In the short time that I've known Jim, he has proven to be an asset to the team as well as a role model and a mentor to his coworkers across the district. My first day here this past August, Jimmy made it a point to come by my office and introduce himself and to offer any assistance that I may need. And since then, I have enjoyed our occasional conversations about our daughters and their softball and volleyball endeavors, and listening to him reminisce about the past 25 years. In one of those conversations, I learned that he proudly served our country as a Marine. No doubt, that is where the foundation was laid that led to his impeccable work ethic. Jim, over the past quarter century, you have been an integral part of the Somers team. Your hard work, loyalty, and dedication have played a pivotal role in the success of the custodial teams at every building you have worked in. It is obvious that you truly care about your profession, the students, and your coworkers. Your willingness to go above and beyond expectations and your ability to adapt to challenges have been truly commendable. Your hard work has not gone unnoticed. I know that I can speak for the entire Somers community when I say thank you for your contributions and your commitment to moving forward in excellence. I look forward to many more years of success and collaboration with you. Congratulations on this remarkable achievement. So, here's to the next chapter of your journey with the Somers Central School District.
Jim, if you could just hang out for just a minute, Jim, before you head back. Thanks, sir. I know he is. So, we're going to go ahead and take a break in a second. I just want to say thank you again for the combined 200 years of service that all of our family members of Somers have given to our children, to our families, and to the schools. From my heart, thank you very much. We're going to take a quick break so the board can say hi to everybody, so, thank you, Paul. All right, we're going to head started, Paul, so thank you very much. So, again, this is first of our kind of three very festive types of board meetings towards the end of the year. So, our next one we look at, we have our kind of tenure recognition, and then folks who are going ahead and retiring from the organization and things, so we get some celebrations coming forth. So, thanks again for all those folks who were able to come and spend some time celebrating with us this evening. So, we're going to head back to our next part of the agenda, so our public hearing. So, just before Nick reads into this here, just that as we look at the budget process and budgeting piece we go through, Chris and myself, along with the board, we really start that way back in the summertime, and we've gone through month by month, component by component, district leadership conversations, administrative leadership conversations, building-based conversations. We have a wonderful Citizens Finance Committee. We have members from the board on there, community members on there. So, it is an ever-evolving, ever-going-on kind of process that we're looking at. Later tonight, actually, you'll see a little bit of our forecasting for the next five years and things, so... But it is an evolving piece. So, Chris, anything you want to add before we kind of open it up?
No, I think it's just, it's quite the process every year, and it's always good to get to this point in the year when we're wrapping up and just looking forward to the vote in two weeks.
Great. All right, so we'll open up the public hearing for public comment. Really quick, all speakers will promptly identify themselves, a maximum of 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker. No district employee or student may be commented upon, identified by situation or name. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply at a later time or date. Questions requiring investigations will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and later response. All written statements will be given to the district clerk. All right, go once, twice, it's old. All right, we move on from the public hearing. Now, we'll move on to the central office report.
Thank you. And so, with this in relationship to the budgeting conversation, we have our five-year long-range fiscal plan, as Chris will pull that up on the screen here momentarily. We'll go ahead and walk through this piece. So, you will see some background, general background about the school district enrollment and such, walking us through some historical numbers that we've seen, a little bit of a comparative to other areas in the Westchester region. And then, really, the three main buckets looking at here are numbers for our revenue, our expenditures, then the combination of our revenue and expenditures on the last, second to last slide. We will close out with a little conversation about the next work as we look at forthcoming planning on the capital project that we're looking at, the bond project in the next May. So, I'll turn this over to Chris, and thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Kind of just went through the table of contents on the next page here already, so thank you for doing that. So, I'll just kind of jump right into it. So, I'll try to zoom in here as much as I can so people in the audience can follow along here. So, we've always had a long-range financial plan, but this year, we've looked to kind of put it out for public consumption. So, when putting this together, you know, why do we have a long-range financial plan? One of the reasons coming out of last year was fiscal stewardship was identified as one of our six elements of excellence, and that the mission of the fiscal stewardship is that the district will ensure its commitment to responsible financial planning and allocation of resources to ensure a safe learning environment where all students achieve excellence. Long-range financial plan helps paint a clear picture, a financial picture, of where the district is currently and where it's going to be in the future. It's also helpful just to show the financial stability and support of the district, New York State Comptroller's Auto- New York State Comptroller's audits and best practices show that districts should have a long-range financial plan. Even for credit ratings, it helps. They want to see these plans. And then also, it just provides transparency and shows the fiscal responsibility that the district has shown over the last few years and the years that will be continuing in the future. So we're just going to start off just a summary of the district as a whole. Again, you know, suburban community, two campuses. We have Primrose and the high school on one campus, middle school, and Somers Intermediate School on the other. And then we get into a few different areas here, just showing the district race and ethnicity over the last few years. This goes back to 2016, up through the '22-'23 school year. You can see the, back in 2016, the population that identified as white was just under 90% and now that number is just under 80%. And then you could see in the green bar where they say the Hispanic population has grown from about 5% up to about 13.5% this past school year. So our demographics continue to change. But again, just moving down, just moving through the presentation here, four-year graduation rates. You still see that Somers is the red bar. The beige bar is for the Putnam, Northern Westchester, BOCs average, and then the blue line is for the New York State average. And this is the four-year graduation rates that we're showing here. You could see that Somers, going back to 2015 up through 2022, compares very well to the districts in the area in PNW BOCs and compares very well to the New York State average for the four-year graduation rates. Now we kind of highlight where we currently are and looking, just, we'll have some bar graphs on historical revenues and expenses, and then after just kind of showing currently where we are, then we look forward for the next few years. So this one is just highlighting that, you know, the district receives 85% of its revenues from local sources. And when we say local sources, we're talking school taxes, so taxes to the community. So 96% of that, 85% of the revenue is from our property taxes. The majority of the rest of the revenue sources come from state aid, and you can barely see a little sliver of some transfers that we have and then some federal aid that we also receive. And that's usually, that federal aid is just for our Medicaid reimbursement that we get from the federal government. Then again, just going back for the past five years, this is just, again, showcasing the revenue streams. Again, the blue bar is our local revenue, which the majority of it is property taxes, and that orange bar is the state aid. So then we kind of just jump right into the expenses. Again, currently, just kind of showing where we're at as of right now. 73% make up that salaries and benefits that we talk about during many of the budget presentations. That blue bar, blue side is salaries, the orange bar is benefits. And then we also show that debt service makes up about 6% of the budget. That green area, the other objects making up that almost 21%, is all your other items that don't fall into those categories. So your utilities, insurances, special education, added district tuition, transportation, our security, technology, everything else outside of salaries and benefits and debt service, that's where that 20% is coming from. And again, just kind of showcasing it again, historically, where we've been with these areas. Salaries and benefits, again, has historically been in that kind of 72% to 74% range. Debt service has remained relatively consistent over the last few years, and then, as well as the other objects. So this next slide is just talking about some of the fund balance and reserves that the district has and the importance that they are for districts to have. It illustrates the fiscal stability of the district. Reserve accounts are established for specific purposes. We have our tax reserve for our tax sorciaries. We have our capital projects. And again, you know, we just established a capital reserve fund a couple of years ago, and then we then asked the community to approve us using those funds the following year. And we have just broken ground on our tennis courts just this past week. So again, they're established for a specific reason. It allows us to help prepare for future financial costs without having to ask the community for additional funds. And then there's also a thing called unassigned fund balance, which by law, were capped at 4% of the following year's budget, and we've maintained that 4% for many years. So this graph, I'm going to zoom out just a little bit, goes back to 2018, and the brown bar on the bottom is that unassigned fund balance that's capped at that 4% of the following year's budget. The purple bar is representing some restricted reserves. Those are the ones that I just spoke about, like your capital reserve, your tax sorciaria reserve. Again, designed for a specific purpose. That red one was a new reserve that by law, they allowed us to establish a reserve for teachers' retirement system contributions. Up until that year, a couple of years ago, we could only have one for the New York State employees' retirement system. So it was nice that they, the state changed the law or amended the law to allow us to have a reserve for the teachers' retirement system as well. And you'll see, you know, the bar went up quite a bit over the last couple of years here. Two reasons mainly, that establishment of the capital reserve where we started putting funds in there, and then also, we knew that there are, there were a couple of large tax sorciaries that we started planning for. One, we've settled and made those payments, so you're going to see next year's report when we update these numbers. This bar is going to come back down to closer to that kind of 13% or 14%. And then just to continue on a little bit more with the fund balance and reserves, so we looked at the Westchester County suburban public school districts over the last few years. This chart is illustrating the last five years. And the reason we looked at the Westchester County suburban public school districts is we removed any city school districts. They have different, they have slightly different, say, debt limits and restrictions that they have to follow that we do not. So we removed them from the equation. So again, over the last 10 years or so, for Westchester County suburban public school districts, they've had about 22% of their budget in fund balance and reserves, whereas Somers has averaged about that, that almost 14%. And the chart below, it's even going higher now, Westchester County suburban public school districts have averaged almost 25% over the last five years, and Somers was at about 16%. And again, that number is, you know, this past year, we were up almost 21%, but that number is going to drop when we update this the following year because we then, because we use some of that money from the tax sorciaria reserve to refund that settlement and then also the capital reserve now since we've gotten, moving on that project. So it's kind of a history of where we've been, and now we're going to jump forward now to where we think we're going to go. One thing I do love to caution, even with our budget that's going to be voted on in a couple of weeks, it's only as good as a moment in time. There's lots of ever-changing parts, even just for the budget for next year. We're getting retirements and resignations, and all these things play into the overall budget, so it is made at a moment in time. And that's the same thing with this long-range financial plan. There's going to be things that change, and we'll make adjustments each year to account for those trends that are occurring. So and just some of the revenue projections. Overall, we're looking at about a 2.72% average property tax increase over the next five years. Again, that would all be staying within the allowable tax levy limit. So we're looking at, we put in here a 1.38% increase in state aid over the next five years. You see the four years outside of, say, the '24-'25 school year, we have a flat 2%. We know that that did not come to fruition for the '24-'25 school budget, but we are hopeful that we'll see a little bit more in state aid in future years. We did have a large increase in interest and earnings in the first year due to the current rates that we're receiving. And then, as we have talked about, even for next year with our appropriated fund balance and reserves, we have always used that to kind of be that shock absorber in the budget so we're not slashing programs or anything like that from year to year. This does fluctuate. And again, going back a decade or so, we've been as high as, say, $2 million in our appropriated fund balance usage, and we've been as low as $25,000. So for this projection here, we still are within that kind of $2 million range. You know, it's, looks like it's going to be less in the next few years, and then, you know, years three and four going out there, it starts to increase a little bit.
Chris, just on that, what I know we spoke about a little bit, but that from the state aid perspective, from the basic aid, because the percentage that you shared earlier in the presentation, that part of the pie is a lot smaller than many school districts. So the 2%, I think is a reasonable number. When we look at that roughly $200,000 increase each year, so it's not as big of a part as that future budget because we just don't get as much from the state to begin with. So I appreciate you pointing that out in nice, clear detail that it's not like, woo, you're crazy off here. It's not a massive number because we don't start with a huge amount from the state to begin with. So thank you.
Where do they get their percentage that they give the state?
Where does the?
Where do they come up with the percentage that they give us?
The state?
Just hey, let's give them this this year?
Well, they're, so in there, there's a, their base kind of foundation aid, there's a lovely formula that takes into account enrollment, free and reduced lunch population, wealth ratio of districts. There's a whole, there's a lot of different factors that go into that number. This whole big thing with the foundation aid for this upcoming school year, '24-'25, districts have always been held harmless. So if maybe running the formula, you're supposed to receive, you know, a million dollars less, there's always been this kind of save harmless that you would never receive less than what you received the prior year. That was attempted to be removed in the governor's proposal. So there were many districts that saw a pretty significant drop in their foundation aid. We did not see a large drop, but then overall, when the legislature and they approved the state budget, that was put back in. So districts were held harmless for that.
And then, Chris, I know that as the board here, and board lobbies, superintendent's lobby, teachers' lobby, to have the formula that you described before to be assessed and reevaluated. So right now, the Rockefeller Center isn't supposed to be able to deliver that in roughly the next nine months. Back to the state for the next budget cycle to really do this, you're looking at a formula that's decades old and is just not kept up to the speed. So that was a part of, from the hospital representatives in the Senate to go ahead and lobby to get that back in place, holding. So we'll learn more about what that looks like. One of the key pieces from the legislation though was to remove what was in the proposal before, was to guarantee that whatever the formula was, districts would already be starting to lose revenue. And so from the legislation, actually, they said that's not what we're interested in. Say, what does education need to run in the state? And that's where we're starting from. So I would commend our legislative partners to going back to the table and advocating for our local school districts and had a chance to meet with some of our representatives the other day, Rochelle Moore and such like that. Couldn't thank her enough and our leaders in the legislation to put that back in because that would have been really detrimental if that stayed. So we're getting it back in place, looking at a redoing of the whole calculations, the calculus that goes behind that. So not starting out with the predetermined determination, it's going to be, if you're getting smaller, you're getting less. It's what does education need? So that formula is meant to come for hopefully the readjustment for the '25-'26 funding.
That was, yeah, that was going to be my question. How do we lobby to get more?
Yeah, so the piece is then the state has done that. I know NISMAs sent letters, I've sent letters, we've sent letters. I am a member of the advocacy council for lower Hudson region of school districts. We advocate, we met legislators in the area, and so that's there. The best we could have happened, I think, we got. We got the opportunity to go back and making sure that we're going to look at a formula that isn't predetermined to be an automatic decrease. So that was, that was a strong, strong part for us.
Would it be a part of the formula as to how much the community is paying in school tax? And does that reflect on what the state's going to give us?
And that's a little bit where, Chris, with property value, what is the value of your community? What is your ability to raise taxes? If you look at some districts that are north of us in the, you just don't have the ability to generate and raise taxes from there, so you're getting more from the state. So it is going back to the whole formula from the base level and looking at and redesigning a formula that is more analogous to what we're seeing right now when the initial proposal that Chris spoke about before was looking at, the consumer price index was in there, but that was removed. And it was removed in the fact of remove the high, remove the low, and just grab something in the middle. It did not reflect the current reality, so the hope and the desire is the formula would reflect more of the current reality. In Westchester, New York, our formula basis is not aligned with the city, it's aligned with north. You and I know that doesn't make a lot of sense, in my opinion. And so that is a key factor. We hope in Westchester that we have better alignment just with what the cost of living here is, just going down to the city where many of our families do work, do commute all the time, and living here versus heading up north a little bit where it is a little bit more cost-effective solution.
So they do pretty much say, hey, well, it's 2024, the local tax is $90 million. They get that much money from local tax, so we're not only going to give them, say, what, $15 million?
And that's where they go back and look at the assessment.
Comes from with their assessment.
Yes, assessment of the community.
And yeah, because they're looking at community wealth.
Yep.
Right.
The wealthier your community, the more they're expecting your community, the care that lifts too. And Westchester-Putnam School Board Association, every January usually, they have a legislative forum, and that's, they go through the whole thing about how this formula works. So it's, the first year I did it, it was like, whoa, this is crazy. And each year, I understand it a little bit better. So that's a good thing to look for. And on their website, they have a voter voice and they have the advocacy links on there too. I think I've mentioned that a couple of times, that that's another place that as school board trustees, we can, and even community members can get on there to, easy emails for advocacy. So watch the emails. Usually we get emails from them.
So I know your kind of question was just kind of on the foundation aid. There's also expense-based aids that we get reimbursement from the state as well, say, for transportation and building aid. So in the projections here for, say, the '27-'28 school year, our building aid, we're projecting to increase based off of starting the projects on that bond project that we're going to ask the community to vote on in May of 2025. We'll look to then start receiving some aid on those, you know, if the project is approved and we get going on it, then we'll start to be receiving building aid on those projects.
Those are the subtleties that, you know, are things that we've kind of learned along the way. I've learned from the administration as you were talking about the budget, you know, that when you planned the capital project, as long as you included something that was inside a school building too, then we got aid for it. If we had only done outside on the fields, we wouldn't have gotten any aid.
Right.
And like switching our technology services to BOCs, we're getting aid rather than if we were paying a private company outside.
Yep.
So it's helping increase the amount of aid that we're getting, decrease what we're relying on.
It's always the plan.
And that's a good point. Sorry, Chris, I'm just going to follow up where I was. If you look at the other state revenue between '25-'26, that's exactly the forecasting of getting the funds back from BOCs for technology. We're spending next year, the year in the rear. So it's not a capital project, it's because we're using services more from BOCs. So instead of, you know, the more typical amount, you're looking at, you know, approximately $800,000 increase there. Lion's share of that is because of what we're doing next year to change technology services.
Okay, so we have to pay it the first year and then we get the money back the next year. Okay.
Chris?
Yep.
Could you explain that the other state revenue oscillates in the odd year versus even year quite a bit? What's the primary reason?
So I think, so in the '25-'26 school year, as Dr. Blanch just mentioned, we're going to be receiving that aid, additional BOCs aid for us by moving Edutec over to BOCs for next year, for '24-'25. Then we'll receive the aid in the '25-'26 school year. So that's where you see the bump in the '25-'26 school year. And then in the '27-'28 school year, that's where I was just mentioning about the capital project, if we start that project and then start to, that's when I anticipate that we'll start to receive some of the aid back on that project. So that's a significant jump. It's like 1.3 or 1.4 million dollars that we'll be looking to be receiving in building aid on those, on that project. So it's not anything specific to...
It's not related to election year or not?
No, it has nothing to do with that. Just when we're looking to have the expenses and then the revenues start to flow in.
Because we get building aid currently on the life of the bonds that we currently have, correct?
We get aided typically over 15 years for, unless you're doing a real addition to a building or something like that, but some of our renovation projects, yeah, it's over 15 years. And that's typically how long we're going to be taking out a bond for.
And that's typically what, 41%?
Yeah, we're approximately 41% currently, and it fluctuates a little bit from year to year, but within, I'd say, you know, 2% to 3% within a year.
And you guys, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, so in theory, by doing that, putting that back into... Yeah, no, so in theory, by doing that, putting that back into the building, even if we're paying 10% on the bond, it's, again, oversimplifying the math, but it's like paying 31, you're getting negative 31% percentage rate return.
Yeah.
Because the state's giving you money for it.
Mm-hmm.
And you're always looking to maximize the projects in order to get as much state aid as we can back on the buildings.
Right, because not every cost associated with the project is aidable, but we do our best, and we work with our architects and our fiscal advisors to make sure we're maximizing the amount of aid that we'll be receiving on the projects.
And then if we look at, Chris mentioned earlier about the athletic facilities project, by not binding, bonding that, you're avoiding a little bit over $2 million of interest cost on that. We are also, though, getting approximately 41% back on that $7 million project. So we will be receiving approximately $150,000 in aid for the next 15 years for that project. So again, doubling those two up, it's a pretty significant savings by using reserve funds as opposed to putting that out to bond. So those are two pieces we don't want to miss, because as we have about $3 million remaining in that capital reserve, when we go to capture that, again, those are $3 million, we use those to build on projects, we use $3 million, we'll get about 40% back on that. So that's about a $1.2 million increase in our state revenue, and we're avoiding over, you know, a seven-figure number, basically, in any interest that we may have. So the tactic there is one that we've employed for, for quite a while. Safety security project, last one, we did some bond, we balanced it out with the capital reserve that we had established at that point in time. So, thank you, Chris, for, again, the five-year plan points it out pretty quickly what's happening, and so, thank you.
Great. In the plan, as far as assumption goes, what did you use for inflation?
Uh, so kind of, well, on the revenue side, again, property tax is kind of going out. I kept our capital levy exclusions consistent for each of the years, and we talk a little bit about that further down in the plan, about maintaining that kind of level debt service, which then helps us to eliminate having any kind of big swings in our tax levy calculation. So for that, again, comes to about 2.7%. And then just for the, say, for like our interest earnings, or our Westchester County sales tax have been there somewhere between, say, 1.5% and 2% of an increase for each of the, each of the years.
And not to skip ahead, but our debt service is actually much lower than the Westchester County average of school districts, correct?
Yes, and, well, I know you don't want to skip ahead, but we'll...
Sorry.
So again, this chart is just kind of taking the numbers that are up above and putting them in a similar graph from what we had before, just showing the local share and the state share, and again, that ever-so-small federal share. I don't know how much detail I'll just go into here, but this is our, just a five-year look at our property tax cap calculator. It's hard to, hard to predict where we might be, you know, four or five years from now, as far as like our, our tax-based growth factor, that's with some of the construction that's happening in the community. So I kind of kept that flat for each of the years. The allowable levy growth factor, that is basically the CPI index, and if it continues the way it's been, inflation's been well over 2%. And again, we're capped at that 2% number in the formula. And then the other main part here is the capital levy remaining consistent for all the five years. Again, that helps, helps our tax cap calculation remain steady, where we won't have a, a swing one way or another if we adjust our debt limit for the, for the, for that one particular year. And again, each, each one of these years going out, we are projecting that will remain within the allowable tax levy limit for each of the years. So now, just on the expenditure side, very similar-looking chart to what we had with the revenues. Salary adjustments kind of fluctuates for a couple of years there. We know we'll have some retirements coming. Again, it's only good for a moment in time. Things happen, people retire, resign. So we're, it's our best educated guess at this moment in time. And then also with some of our unions, we know that the SFA for our teachers, and then our SSRP for our support staff, those contracts expire in 2026, and then our administrator's contract expires in 2028. So, you know, projecting past, say, 2026 even, for our teachers and our support staff, you know, we don't have a set contract yet. So it's a, makes that a little bit more challenging. ERS rates, we knew what the rates were for '24, '25, and just kind of kept that steady in future years as well. TRS rate, we thought we knew what the rate was for '24, '25, at 10.02%. And then, for the first time, I believe, they said in 17 years, they, they adjusted that rate after it was provided to us, and that has now increased to 10.11%. So 10.11%.
Chris, I think you got that email in the last week, is that right?
Yeah. So, again, first time...
Thanks for the heads up.
Yep. First, first time in 17 years that they've adjusted that rate. So, like I said many, many times, and I'll continue to say it, that this plan, and it's only as good for a moment in time. So I think one of the, when looking at this plan, benefits, as we've talked many times in the budget presentations the last few years, it has been challenging. So maybe it's a little optimistic that those rates will start to come down a little bit more. But we did not keep those rates as high as they have been over the last few years. So when we update this for next year, you know, we'll, we'll see where we are with the benefits on, on that end. Some of the other items, you know, not huge increases one way or another. That debt service principle, again, in that '27, '28 school year, that jumps up, you know, that 1.3, 1.4 million dollars. That, that increase in expenses is offset by that increase in revenue that I just talked about as well. So just for simple math, if we are spending $5 million now, local share, if we're going to increase our expenses by 6 million, but now we're going to get a million back from the state, we're, the local share is still only 5 million. And that is the intent, to try to keep that, that debt service limit steady. Again, it helps with our tax cap calculation, again, so we don't have those, those large swings one way or another. And just, again, summarizing the, the numbers above, this chart is just, and I'll just, you know, highlight the, again, personal services, that's your blue bar, that's your salaries, and then that nice-looking brown bar at to, at the top of the screen is your employee benefits. And between the two, it's making up about 72, 73% of the budget. I won't go through all of this, this is just a summary of the revenues and expenses that we just went through. So balance budget for the next four or five years, as we have to do. But again, we'll update these, these numbers each year. And again, we'll see what, some of the, some of the unknowns that we still aren't fully aware of with like benefits, and see how much of an impact one way or another that's going to have moving forward. And then our last couple of slides here, I know we've kind of talked about it, with debt service and the integral role that it plays for districts, just to kind of try to explain what it is. It's just, it's similar to a mortgage on a, one's home, where there's large capital improvements that need to be made at your home. It's also true for school districts, and our buildings are quite large. The one good portion that school districts have is that they actually get refunded from the state on their capital improvements. So again, that's that 40, about 41% that we're receiving back from the state on approved expenses. So for, for every dollar that we're spending on a capital project that's approved by them, we're getting 41 cents returned to us. And again, keeping that debt limit consistent helps with the tax cap formula, and then it allows for future capital projects to occur without a, an additional increase in, in the tax levy for, for the community. Over the past 10 years, that same Westchester County suburban public school districts have averaged about 7.32% for their debt service. SOMers over that 10 years was just over 6%. And in the last five years, the Westchester County suburban public school districts are about almost 7.5%, and SOMers is about 5.6%. So again, that's what this kind of chart is showing, that, you know, our debt service as a percentage of our budget is still considerably below even Westchester County average of other school districts.
And I'm assuming, because we can't obviously raise money any other way, the only way to do these capital improvement projects would be to bond them, and it's not an unusual thing?
Not an unusual thing, especially for the, for the amount of money that some of these projects take. You know, just the, the paving and concrete work that we're looking at is probably gonna, is gonna maybe approach $10 million.
Right.
So there, there's a lot of work that needs to get done. You know, we maintain them to the best of our abilities, and we have great facilities. But just like at your home, if, if, you know, 30 years later, you need to replace your roof, we, we do as well. And these things do cost money.
A big expenditure all at once. We can't take that out of our regular annual budget, and we can't...
We could try, but I don't think the community will go for it.
We can't put it up into our reserve where, all of a sudden, okay, now we gotta pay out our $50 million to, to a construction project. So that's why it has to get bonded.
Yep.
It's really a very normal way. It's really the only reasonable way to do it.
To do projects of this size, it's really the only way that you could handle, handle that amount.
Hey, Chris, I know we didn't spend too much time in this evening, but we've talked in the past before, another strategy has been to employ a, kind of our, our last project in our boilers was looking at, how can we be more efficient in our usage of, you know, natural fuels and things? So all the boilers there were done. And so we have an energy performance contract. So again, with that coming on board, we get the aid for that, as well as the differential between old going out with new coming in. We've got that basically at a wash. And so that's, again, may have many times been placed into a typical bond, in this case, not. So between the savings and the revenues from the state to 40-ish percent, then that's a, that's a wash, and we get new equipment, and we're more efficient, putting less carbon fuels out in the, in the world. And so that's a piece, again, we're part of the overall multiple pieces that are moving here. So, so that's a piece when we are looking into exploring, is there another opportunity? When we initially looked at it last time before, the photovoltaic cells were not cost-effective at that time with our energy performance contract. Our rate for electricity at the kilowatt hour did not present itself as fruitful. As we all know in our homes, that those costs have increased. And so as we're looking, engaging with our architects, we're looking back at that again, to see if there's opportunity, and perhaps there'll be some incentives coming either from Fed or from state to support that. So that, again, one more mechanism to take care of our schools as, as best as we possibly can. Thanks, Chris.
And then just the, the last page of the plan is just actually taken right from our fiscal stewardship section in our Forward in Excellence Report. Again, just talking about the upcoming bond that we're going to be looking to ask the voters for in May of 2025. So, so not, not in a couple of weeks, it'd be a year from now. And the payments on the new bond would start at the same time that previous bonds will be paid off. And again, that's resulting in no additional cost to the taxpayer. And Dr. Blanch?
Well, not really no additional cost, it just keeps...
Keeping it level.
Keeps it a level.
Keeping it level.
No increase in...
Correct. Yep, that is the intent. And again, we'll work with our fiscal advisors to, to help develop the actual size of that project with the interest rates that we're seeing at that time.
And that's the, basically back to Chris's bar chart, or the chart that he had shared with the line chart, that 5-ish percent is, that's basically our target, that kind of comes off, something comes on. So you're always going to have something going on. So there's not large spikes or large drops to really mess with. In particular, after we have to deal with the tax cap limit beforehand, it wasn't as much of a challenge, but, but now it has a direct impact on that. Before, there was a tax levy limit. You weren't as concerned, but now you definitely need to be there. So that methodology of keeping that approximately 5%. So you'll see when that last one comes on, and the same thing. We know when, back in December, I think we had our architects here, they provided the five-year building condition survey. It described kind of from level one to a level four of one has to happen. We have nothing in there as far as emergency situations, two is end of life, and three is getting close, and four is desirable. That will be in your next five-year capital plan that we would hopefully be looking at. So we'll be narrowing that part down. Best estimate is approximately 2/3 of the funds that we would be looking at here would be put forth towards what I would identify as building envelope work. As Chris mentioned before, some paving, some concrete work, we have heavy work we need to do, and some of our electric paneling and things like that, as well as our fire alarm systems, we have work there. And so there's going to be a good portion there. And then we hope, this last slide is to bring in the opportunity of how can we increase learner engagement through the, the specific and targeted design of our schools. For example, flexible furniture, outside opportunities, looking at our playgrounds at Primrose and SAS, and actually really putting one here at the middle school in place. So the hope is we'll have some funds to get after creating a, as much of a learning, engaging experience for kids. It's different than it was before, and so we know more about how students learn. And the idea, again, is to go ahead and enhance that somewhat, but we have a good chunk of it that needs just to make sure the roofs, nothing's leaking, and the roads are safe to drive upon, and the driveways and things. So, Chris, again, I just want to say thank you for pulling the clarity of this together. And the, the fact of what we've got here and presented here, and the challenges we've had this year, I think it's a, you know, commend you, the team, building administrators, our teacher leaders, to, and our community this year, we spent time, we're talking with, hey, preserve, protect, preserve, protect. So that information flowed back, and hopefully, again, we've got a budget here that, again, we approved earlier this evening to put on the ballot for May, that does reflect the entire community's desires for our school. So, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chris. All right, now we move on to the business consent agenda, uh, sorry, personnel consent agenda. It will be resolved with the Board of Education upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools hereby approves the attached personnel agenda. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
It's all right if I jump in there just one second?
Yep.
We have our, Ms. Elkhans here, but we have our new Assistant Director of Special Education here with us and stuff. So Megan, welcome to the school district and everything. So glad to have you as a Tusker. So, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand objections? Nope. All right, onto the business consent agenda. It will be resolved with the Board of Education upon recommendation of Superintendent of Schools hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Anything, Chris, or?
Uh, just, just, there's only a couple of things on here. One is our lease purchase that we've been doing now for, I believe, the 2050 year, which allows us to lease purchase some of our finance, to finance our, some of our instructional technology equipment, whether that be devices for students and staff, or some of the needed infrastructure upgrades to our technology as well. So we do it over a two, kind of three fiscal year period, three, three fiscal years, but it's paid up in two years from the date that the closing for the funds. So, again, just the 20, 2050 year in a row.
And then the other piece we have on there is just the transfer for the purchase of the updated literacy materials at the K-5 campus. So Liz out of Learning Office will be here on June 11th to kind of wrap that experience down for the end of the year, talking to the board, giving updates to the community, the work that that committee has been doing since last spring through the year, their exploration of different possibilities for learning resources. So that budget transfer allows us to go ahead and take place on the, getting those budgets, things taken care of here as we head into the summer. So those materials are ready and available for all of our faculty, K through 5, as soon as possible, and then certainly ready to start the school year with that work. And again, Liz will be back here on the 11th to speak a little bit more about the committee's closing work and how they landed here. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Stand objections? Nope. That's it. All right, now we move on to public comment. All right. Nope, go once, twice, sold. All right, no public comment. Onto board member comments.
Just wanted to go congratulate the teachers that were here for their 25 years of service. Again, thank you guys for all you do. Chris, thanks for putting that together. I know it's not an easy job, but a lot of moving parts, and, you know, everybody always upset about how their money's getting spent, me included. So, but, you know, thank you for putting that together and dealing with a lot of interest rate changes and utility expenses and everything, and dealing with the state constantly pulling the rug out and trying to throw something new at the last minute after you get a ton. But, you know, I appreciate putting all that together, and, you know, the community sees it. And, you know, hopefully it makes it a lot easier for everybody to digest.
Thank you.
I got a chance to run in late, the last minute, for the community, the NYPD Community Service Project. And I just want to say, just Mrs. Cutino and Ms. O'Connor for putting all that together, you know... You know, it was a really good event and I think we may be getting a crosswalk at the Chico's coming out of it. So, you know, I know all the middle schoolers are gonna love that. So that's all I got. Thank you. Yeah, I'll thank the teachers, which we did earlier and said very, very well. Thank you for caring for our kids. Thank you for caring for each other and making just a great community and environment for everyone. I want to say, two weeks, please come out and vote. We've put forth what 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 we see as as a reasonable and needed budget for our district to continue our success. This is your opportunity. Please come out. It's important for everyone to come out and vote. I want to thank all of the board members, four pers- well, three plus one prospective board members on running this year for giving your time, offering to give your time. What you get back is satisfaction. It's a real valuable feeling. I don't think we any of us do it for any thanks, but we do it because we care about our district, care about our community. And and I think those are the important qualities of a Board of Education member. I challenge all of us, I I know there's an event coming up later this week for the for the candidates. Thursday, Thursday. Great opportunity to learn more about each of them. I challenge all of us, pay attention to to their views, to what they have to say. I find social media can be distracting, can be a lot of views that are offered that are not balanced, that don't provide, you know, the actual data and balanced information that we need to look at as board members. So I I think it's really important, you know, the the Board of Education is not associated with any political parties. But our diversity of views is certainly an asset for all of us. I I say that because I don't think that our political activists in town should be pushing some narrative that sometimes seems like they're formulating that it it confuses me because it doesn't always match with what we what we see in reality. So please pay attention, ask the good questions, listen to what the board members have to say and use that to make your decision and then please come out and vote. And and again, thank you, everybody, for offering, donating your time and efforts.
Well, this week, this teacher's appreciation week, we had some discussion earlier on and we saw the presentation on the retirees and so forth. I had a lot of reflection myself. I always felt teachers very important to inspire kids to learn. And the question, what is the best teacher is always important, at least for me. If I think about myself, when I was in college, I thought my best teacher was my calculus teacher. She's really fantastic. She's a lady that really knows how to approach the problem, make the problem, not just say, well, it's difficult, but it's more interesting, challenging. And when I was in high school, my best teacher, I always felt was the languages, essentially both Mandarin language and English language. And I really appreciate particularly the English language that he made people to memorize dictionary as fun, which is amazing. And a lot of us actually followed him. And he will say that different times, best to do that. One of the times he said was, you know, if you go to bathroom, that's a time to take addition dictionary with you and memorize difficult words. It's very interesting, different ways teaching can inspire, you know, student. So I I personally feel that perhaps we should encourage students to think about what is the, you know, definition of best teacher? Teacher can be teaching the classroom, can inspire in the athletic fields, can inspire kids within the library, doing project, lead away, whatever, different things. So I would encourage our sponsored newspaper, Somers Record, to devote some space for students to submit this, my best teacher, you know, from high school downwards. I don't think that space would be wasted. It would be very, very interesting. Not only good for students, but I think families and communities would appreciate to read them. And if necessary, I would speak to the Somers Record. If the space costs money, I'm personally willing to say, you know, donate something or ask people to donate for a small space to allow students to express what is the best teacher in their mind. That has two purposes, for the students as well as for faculty themselves. I always feel that faculty deserve, you know, more encouragement. Unfortunately, our financial system and this budget system, all this, we have very, you know, sort of hands tied situation. If I would run a school in as a private school, I would encourage the faculty would be rewarded really by merits. Okay, particularly the merits defined by the students. And students, their appreciation, I think, goes a long way in their lives and for the community. And I remember that, you know, last week we had this belonging, is that correct term? Belonging? The Somers Belonging Day or doing we? I enjoyed that that evening. And I had also suggested to organize some kind of a belonging day for Somers to have a bigger gathering. In particular, graduation is coming. And graduation has celebrations. People have parties and so on. And sometimes a person, I mean, even parents sometimes, get into a trouble that, you know, there are too many parties. And if you know several kids graduation graduating, and you could have invitation from several parties. And you don't have that many days time to do that. So perhaps we should encourage the Somers community to have a a giant graduation party. Okay, to organize it for our graduates from all school levels so that, you know, family actually can get together and more people can get together and feel this Somers belonging type of atmosphere. And if you guys think this is a good idea, let's push it. Okay, this whether organizations, civil organizations or schools, you know, can always work together. Thank you.
All right, so yeah, I also have to acknowledge the thank you, the to the teachers that were here. Our 25 years is a great time to spend giving to our students and appreciating all of our teachers this week and the impact that you make on our kids. I had a chance to see some of where our college, our high school seniors are going and it seemed like there were more than usual that are heading into teaching. So that was exciting to see, inspired by by teachers here too, I'm sure. Busy time of year when there's lots of events going on and we have to decide what to go to. I got to go to the district art show, which hopefully most people here were able to see that. That's one of my favorite things all year to see that artwork. But even more that I love seeing all the artwork and the talent of what the kids have been able to do and what their art teachers have helped them to do. But the excitement of the kids as they're going through all ages from like little kindergartners and first graders all the way up through high school seniors and the pride that they have in their work and having it showcased. So, you know, thank you for holding that event still. And I understand that one of our art teachers has received a recognition as an outstanding high school art educator too. So congratulations to teachers who are recognized, but also our teachers who may not be always recognized with awards or special acknowledgement, but are making impact on lives of individual kids every day. I also went to the Somers Sores Belonging Event. That was the first event I think we've had of that kind. I wasn't sure what to expect. It was a really nice evening. Got to meet some new people in town, including somebody who'd only been here for two weeks and came to the event. And so I'm, you know, excited for what will come of it. And I think it was nice to see the collaboration between the school district and the town also, that some of the town board members were there. I think quite a few town board members actually, so that was that was good to see. And so thank you also to the staff who organized that. I think it's important for our whole community. And then I know this Thursday, we've got a couple of choices because the Science Research Symposium is this week, right? That's Thursday. And then, yeah, we've got the the candidate forum for school board. And so my six years on the board have been very rewarding. It's been a it's been a great experience. It can be hard. It can be time consuming. But I can truly say that who you choose for your school board trustees is important. You know, it does play a role in setting the vision and the mission of your school district and how things how things go. And I think, you know, I've I've read articles about it and experienced firsthand the importance of having a trusting and respectful relationship and collaborative relationship between those that are running your district, your administrative team and how your administrators can get along with their teachers and how the board gets along with the administration. I think, you know, that mutual respect is very important and that 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 trust to be able to move an organization forward and be most effective. So keep that in mind as you're looking at your candidates. You've got an incumbent that you know well because he's been leading us up here. And then you've got three new new candidates. So take that time. Some of the things to think about when the National School Board Association gives some recommendations. So, you know, it's not just who's your neighbor and who's your best friend, but the things that they recommend are characteristics of an effective school board. School board member, you know, looking for somebody that's an effective communicator. Are they consensus builders? A community participant who's engaged. Are they good decision makers and leaders? Team players who can work together on a board board vision to be able to be, you know, part of a good, effective school board. So you've got a great opportunity to get to know the candidates. I think most of them have a way that you can reach out individually too. So if you have questions or you want to get to know them better, you can do that and vote.
Just like to recognize again all of the staff that was here for their 25 years of service. Congratulations and I hope you're with us many more years. Congratulations to Megan Phoebe. I don't know if she's still here, but congratulations and welcome to the family. And Teacher Appreciation Day, it's a big day and we appreciate all you guys do for us and our children. You're a venue, very monumental part of our children's lives and we thank you for that. Also, we have Mother's Day coming up. Happy Mother's Day to everybody here and at home in the crowd. And like everybody's been saying, the vote's coming up, so it's important that everybody gets out there, votes. And that's about it. Thank you all for coming.
Well, just great job, Chris, I want to say. You've truly shown how fiscally responsible our our school district is and especially in this tough budget year with a lot of moving parts from the state as as always to keep you on your toes. And as everyone said, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so I want to say congratulations again, not only to the eight teachers or and people here tonight for 25 years of service, which is amazing. But I also want to just take a moment to thank all of our teachers and the terrific work they've been doing in our district. I see all the hard work to ignite the passion in our students by engaging all learners, which is our mission. I think we saw it several times tonight on our different different presentations. And some of this work is evident behind the scenes as the Learning Office is in coordination with the K through five team and PLC associates. And they they saw a need to work on aligning our literacy work and with the science of reading. And they're ready to unpack and launch a new program in September of 2024 to build on students' background knowledge, vocabulary and language comprehension skills. So it'll work in conjunction with the already existing programs on phonics and decoding. And the Learning Office, as Ray mentioned, will be providing us with a formal update at the June 11th meeting. And I'm so happy to see that our budget is supporting these initiatives. Some of the work that's evident, we see in the community showcase projects, which I attended last week. The projects were amazing and showcased so many initiatives to better our community. One of the projects grabbed the attention of all the town council, which was the crosswalk on 202, which has been a big topic. I know it was in the pilot one last year as well. It was notable that all the town council members and assemblymen, Matt Slater showed up to the event and they were very intrigued by that particular one. And it was great to see, it sounds like that the state now has approved the crosswalk and now they're just waiting on funding. So notable, okay, hold on, sorry. One project was also creating a little free library that you see at Fireman's Field. Another project was having kids read to the shelter kittens and socialize them and get ready for adoption. Another project was the impact of litter on the planet and even another one on composing music and supporting the SMS music program. These are just a very small handful of the projects. It was a great night. And I just have to say, I hope that the students and parents should be incredibly proud. I know that Mrs. Mangone is proud of you guys, Mrs. Scatino, Mrs. Connor did a great job. But the budget supports this learning. I also feel like it's safe to say these projects were created out of students' passion as well. The art show was amazing. To have a K through 12 show like that and see all the talented artists from as little as kindergarten and as old as as going off to college to pursue their art dreams, it's amazing. Again, igniting passions in our school districts and and this budget definitely supports that. The Somers Sores event was great on belonging and it was wonderful to have an opportunity to have intimate conversations with a cross section of community on a on a sense of belonging that I wouldn't normally have that opportunity. And finally, I do want to mention I attended the education law update hosted by Westchester Putnam School Board Association. I learned so much and I will work on sharing my notes out by the end of this week. I attended this year and I attended last year and I've attended several other trainings offered to offered for, you know, over the past couple of years is my time on the board. And I I really have tried to strive to be, take advantage of being a lifelong learner, like we require we require of our students. And I just want to remind some of our, it reminded me of some of our onboarding training too, as I became a board member and how we were taught that we have to go govern as a team and our success as trustees is dependent on the success of our board. So I hope we can all challenge ourselves to take advantage of more of these learning opportunities in the future. And that's all I have. And there's a lot of great events coming up with the Science Research Symposium on Thursday. Middle school concerts are this week and next week. And there's also an event at the high school for the Night of Remembrance for the Holocaust tomorrow night. So hopefully I'll see some of you all at some of these upcoming events.
Amanda, you reminded me one more thing I wanted to say. I just wanted to put in a plug for the Westchester Putnam School Board Association Annual Meeting and Dinner. That's June 3rd because the deadline to register for it, I think, is before our next meeting. So just wanted to make sure that was in a recent email. Nancy has the information too, but it's on June 3rd. It's encouraged to have many members of a of a school board go. And I've been on the Board of Directors for the past two years. It's been great to be able to represent Somers in that capacity because that organization does do a lot of lobbying. And so having not every school district has a member that's on the Board of Directors and in part part of the conversations that are going on. It's great to be able to represent Somers and what we need and be able to showcase some of what we do in conversations too. So next year, we won't have somebody from our district on the Board of Directors. But if somebody is interested the following, you know, is interested down the road, I can certainly share with the nominating committee that there's someone interested. One thing I'll say is just make sure that you go to some of the events that they offer during the year so that they know who you are. But, you know, in the future, it would be great to have somebody else take on that role for for Somers. They're always looking for volunteers, so.
Great. Thank you, everybody. All right. Trying not to be duplicative, but it's hard. These next couple of weeks have been are my favorite time of being on the school board, right? The 25 years of service, celebrating that, the retirement stuff that's coming up, but getting a chance to actually see the teacher. up, but getting a chance to actually see the teachers in person is exciting, and, you know, thanking them afterwards. The, the five-year plan, Ray, Chris, and everybody else in board, on, that assisted with that, you know, thank you very much for showing that and putting that out in the public, again, it's useful to see what, what, that you have that plan, you know, and that vision going forward, and what to expect on that, and I think it's great putting that out there, and, you know, look, we know that, you know, things are going to change, we're going to get hit with more surprises, you know, like we do every year, but again, we just adjust that and tweak that, but showing that plan, I think, is immensely valuable, I know, to the board, and I'm sure the community as well. So, thank you for everybody that put the effort and time into that. The community project, I did get to go see that last week, look, that was, you know, and thank you to everybody involved in that, that was a culmination of, you know, all the stuff going on, you know, in the school, that is, you know, I think immensely powerful as far as where our curriculum's going, and what we're changing as far as with the IB in the middle years, in the, the more practical use and output, right? We're not sitting there in the old days, like, we should just take Scantrons and take a test and get a grade at the end of it, but you had the kids actually sit there and put together thoughtful ideas, you know, and then, great, how do they put together, you know, how to solve those, and then go ahead and present those to, you know, not only board members, teachers, other parents in the district, but also you had the town, you know, councilmen and, you know, people there as well. Look, I think more and more stuff like that is great to see, and I'm happy that we're putting more into that in the, as part of our, you know, curriculum and school teachings. So, thank you for everybody on that. I will, and as Amanda reminded, right, there, there's a lot of activities coming up over the next couple of weeks, I'm getting emails, you know, every day, between, you know, juggling that and the, my own kids' activities, it's tough, but again, we encourage everybody to make sure you're trying to go and, you know, to support the school and students, and, you know, see what's going on out there. That's all I have, thank you. Ray?
Thanks. If it's all right, Liz, if you wouldn't mind if you, you just had those out, so, everybody has a, what I'm referencing to is a placemat, with just a little bit of, not quite audience participation, but I'd like to involve you into the conversation here a little bit, so, I think you heard, if not every board member, just about every board member, that mentioned about our community service project from last week here at the middle school, and so, just wanted to share with you a little bit here, this is kind of underneath Jen Mangone's leadership and the billing leadership here in the learning office, and if you look at the instructional framework in a school, you want to make, you see if you have that, some do, some don't, one of the pieces you'll see here is an inquiry-based process here, so you'll see the inquiry circle in the middle there, these are the four components that make up the community service project, from inquiring and analyzing, developing ideas, creating solution, and evaluating that. So, if you look over to the right, this is basically the experience that the children went through in eighth grade as they started early in the years, you know, what's, what's community, and they talked about that in their different classes and experiences, are there some needs that a community has, and they went through that work, what ideas for the community needs do you have? And then over to the left, what are your personal interests? So, as I talked about before, in our mission statement, it talks about engaging students at a personal level and igniting their passion, and up at the top is, how can you connect your personal interest to your community's needs, and that's what, if you had an opportunity, as many of us came last week, to see, that in action. And as Nick was saying, it wasn't a, you know, multiple guest test or anything, it was their passion, their work moving forward. Some got to amazing completion, others got to a spot where they had the next question, the next right answers. If you look at what's identified as the applied approach to learning skills, those are those skills, so that framework that we've talked about from the International Baccalaureate Program, the content is delivered through the state standards, these are the skills that students are taught, so, if you think about that from specific kind of things, where you look at types of questioning, types of work, if it's a lower level thinking, just a fact and recall, versus, is this a higher level piece, and Maslow's higher piece, and you're thinking about, okay, I'm analyzing, I'm justifying, I'm following, designing, evaluating, again, very different experience from what it was before, when it might be just reporting out, or I'm regurgitating information. So, again, as you think about this, it's such a different experience, this group will be the first group, when they get to 10th grade, they will complete what's identified as their personal project, so the community project, you're intended, more likely work with the group, specifically the community needs, same group, they'll be doing this in 10th grade. So, just wanted to highlight again, and on the backside, you'll see our mission statement there, it's igniting a passion, how do we do that? This is an example of the instructional framework that exists across our schools, six through 12, and in particular, right now, because that is a component of the International Baccalaureate Framework, best instructional practices, and thinking about ways to engage learners, cross-culture connections, and being inquiry-based, so, that's a piece you will see coming more and more out of classrooms proper. So, I just want to share that placemat, again, I couldn't have been more excited, like you said, the library heading down the street there, students coming forth and sharing their thoughts and their ideas, we had student, young students creating camps here for students who are interested in athletics, and so they volunteer money there. I have four students here who met with me earlier this week, they have a desire and a passion, Chris and I have a conversation with them, coming up forth with our architects, they have some thoughts and ideas about how we can improve our learning environment for our, all students, so, I'll meet with them in the next couple of weeks, we're going to talk to them, they're going to meet with our architect, they're going to, so that's the real world application. When I share with them the cost of the pavement, they're like, wow, that's a lot, I said, yes it is, so, don't become with too big a quest, and so, but that's the learning conversation we had, so, again, thanks for Jen, always letting the kids be available to work on that. The next piece, and I know the learning office getting this coordinated, and I think there'll be a meeting after next, but I couldn't help but just highlight a little bit, the seal of biliteracy, the state came out a few years ago, we gave our first class of students, these are senior students, who are identified at a high level of proficiency, as they, they have their home language, and then their second language that they've chosen, and one of the key pieces in there is they have to be able to demonstrate, project-based present to teachers, not quite a defense of a dissertation or a thesis, but they have to defend their, their ability to, in particular, communications, interpretive, interpersonal, and presentational skills, they have to do that live and in person. So, last year, we had five, we have a, not a bad return on investment, we have 15 kids this year, it's a 300% increase from last year to this year, we have our world language teachers that will come and share that out, we have a, four kids that are, and French is their chosen second language, Italian is six, Spanish is five, so, again, just a sample of our teachers' commitment, while, again, like Heidi was saying before, may not get that, hey, here's the, we're here and things, which is nice to have, but those are teachers just knocking out of the park, doing the best things for kids and making that work forward. Same as in June 11th, when Liz comes to talk about teachers creating the best learning opportunity for our children, as we all learn more about how we can do better instructing students for learning, is what exists today, back when I was a classroom teacher, you know, didn't have the, didn't have any technology, didn't have an iPad, didn't have any of that stuff, didn't have this phone on your, on your wrist there bothering teachers in the middle of the day in classes and stuff, so, to do what they do today is, is extremely impressive, and so, I can't, again, thank the teachers enough, as we spoke, and the next piece is always, what's the right answer today? And not, oh, it's forevermore, it's, oh, where are we going next, and where are we going next, and so, I don't think you'll ever hear complacency sit into our school district, our teachers, we heard about our teachers pieces, it's about teaching to the heart, and making sure that they're ready and prepared for success in our global society, wherever that may lead them, so, thank you to all of our teachers and our support, and thank you, Board, for last couple of weeks to be in the places, and I know next couple of weeks, we're all going to get as best as we can and dipping in, so, it's pretty cool to see, so, thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you. Let it resolve this special meeting workshop of the Board of Education, be adjourned.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.